We've got everybody we're going to have. Go ahead and call the work session to order. Number one on the agenda is the discussion to repeal and replace ordinance number 1266 and ordinance 1705, garbage and trash, trash collection and disposal.
Thank you, counsel. As you know, last time we visited, we got into a pretty good discussion and y'all asked for us to look at, and I know that I sent a little red line, just some thoughts. And some of them are quite easy. One, I think it's important when we say each, we add the word receptacle to it since we are now charging per cart. And it was already in there, the last line under section C, only City of Fairhope garbage containers will be allowed to be serviced. That's going to be probably a big, big thing since now the service is based upon the number of carts. And as we refer to them, we do have orphan cans out there and we tend to be pretty generous in picking those up, but we need to make sure that we're picking up, you know, City of Fairhope issued garbage containers. And then, and I was trying to get some perception, I think there was some concern still with the council about the individuals that may not have the ability to receive a full service from the City of Fairhope, but they're paying a fee even though they may not be in a subsidized or fixed housing or whatever. And just as an item to lead to discussion, I added in an F that said, any occupant living in a housing unit that is not capable of being fully served by the city, garbage, trash, and/or recycle, the occupant may complete an application provided by the city requesting a reduction by 50% of the rates posted above. Example, apartment house would be 50%, which would be $10 a month versus the full 20. And that would at least give ability, if it was in the council interest, to say, hey, we realize we provide services across the city as a whole, but we're not capable because there's not a place for carts or anything like that, that there is a way to request a reduction if that is the case. Because that's kind of what I, I thought I heard that was a concern. I will preface that by saying, I will tell you, I've been with you almost five years. And the nice woman that came in at the council meeting two months ago that shared that concern, that was the second time in my history as your director that that has ever been brought up. The other one was, believe it or not, Spring Run Apartments. The manager says, hey, every one of my tenants who has a utility meter is paying $20, but we have a dumpster service. And in that case, we were able to provide them service. So they got rid of their dumpster and we were able to convert that small apartment complex to about 12 receptacles, which they roll out three times a week. We picked them up, great customer. And in that case, we were able to serve them, so that was an applicable fee and we accomplished. They got rid of their dumpster expense, we fully served the customer. So that's really been the only two cases. It may not be as big of a problem as I'm sitting here suggesting to solve, but we're looking for guidance from y'all of if you think that's a worthy caveat to add to the ordinance.
So if I recall, this is, this is a kind of a, kind of an in-between solution, and I don't want to call it a compromise, I want to call it a maybe a common sense solution. The, you know, the 50% reduction because we have no way of knowing whether or not they may be going and using the landfill or taking stuff to drop off recycling, which they're allowed to do by being a citizen.
Correct.
And we have to recover the cost because we're providing that, whether they take advantage of it or not. And so I think that, personally, I think that sounds like a pretty good compromise, Mr. Johnson. I don't know what other council members believe, but what do y'all think?
No, I agree. I think the issue was, you know, when, when there is a situation where a citizen is charged the full amount for a service that for whatever reason they don't have access to use.
We can't provide it.
We can't provide it to them wherever they may live. I think that, that bothered me a little bit now, but I completely agree with what you're saying, that everybody bears a certain burden for city pickup, citywide, access to the dump and all these other things. And so whether you use a service or not, access to the service is what you're paying for. And so it sounds to me, Richard, like you've come up with a really good, I guess it's paragraph F that you mentioned, kind of solves a lot of the, the heartburn that at least I had in the prior meeting while still providing the subsidized housing exception that we also discussed in that prior meeting.
Or anybody that can't get the service, I think, is what I heard. It doesn't have to do with subsidies.
No, 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 well, that's, that's an additional paragraph, I think. There's.
Okay, well, I want to hear about that. But the other thing I want to just throw in on the services, not only the, you know, the landfill services, recycling services, you can, you can drop that off, you know, and that's just free, you get a sticker down here for free. But it also, you know, in public works, the garbage collection also includes, you know, when you clean the streets, you know, street sweeping and things like that, that everybody benefits from. So there's, there's a lot of things that go into that equation. It's not a simple matter of, that, that every bit of that money is used to pay for garbage collection in receptacles.
Right. I completely agree.
So let's hear the other part then, I guess, of that, right?
Well, that was already in there. This was, this was to address individuals that didn't receive full service, that were on fixed income, living in subsidized housing, and that's item E. Any occupant who lives in a subsidized housing unit and only receives income from social security may qualify for an exemption from the garbage fees. The City of Fairhope has a form that can be taken to your property manager to complete. Then the occupant returns the form to the city for the exemption consideration, which means that if you're in a subsidized housing for fixed income individuals, usually retirees on social security, then, and we don't provide the service to that facility, then you can be exempted 100%, meaning there would be no cost attached to your utility bill.
Is that allowed, Marcus?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know that Daphne does that. I mean, that's very common, is that you filled out a form and demonstrated that you, or purely social security was your only source of income, and you got exempted from garbage fees.
Okay. But do we calculate, Kim, have you ran the numbers on that? What's the reduction in revenue to the city based on that, on those numbers, if everybody participated?
I have not ran the numbers. Everybody's got a good idea that y'all remember the rates, the rates because we're losing money. So if any deduction was.
Well, we talked about it last time, the percentage of our customers that we, that would even qualify for this exemption or, or reduction. And what was that, no, it was a small.
It was, it was actually, and that was probably misleading to the council because we don't know how many people, we have basically three to four apartment, apartments in Fairhope that are subsidized housing. We don't know how many people are in those apartments that are only on social security. And we also don't know how many are going to take the time to complete the form because the burden's going to be on them.
Well, you can say, how many, are there more than 100 units in each one of those apartment complexes?
No.
All right, look, so if I just used a number of three or 400 total, three to four buildings, that's 100.
I would say, I would say.
400 customers.
I would say three.
Okay. 300 times 20?
Maybe.
6,000 a month is 72,000 a year.
And to give you, and.
That's if 100% participated.
And I think the, the, the other big, big change is the per receptacle, which is in our favor. You know, there are businesses that have 11 receptacles and right now, they're paying the base business rate plus $5 per receptacle. They're going to go from, that would be, what, 50 plus 25, they're at 75. And now, if they keep all 11 cans, that's 11 times 25. So I think that the offset is there. We, you know, we have a, and we've been working with the mayor on the billing end of things, we have a hard time being able to, we're, we're still perfecting our ability to know exactly, exactly service customers versus account customers. And that is a big challenge because, again, we have every person who established a utility service who lives inside the city limits right now as an account customer. We have a pretty good idea and we think that the difference is somewhere around about 10% based upon count, can counts versus customer counts. So even the worst case is that if every person that qualified this came, came in, that would reduce us, that 10% somewhere in half because we're, because very few of them are going to qualify for the full exemption.
Brings another question up, counsel. And we've talked about, I believe in yet to pay per receptacle, but if you're, if you're making one stop on that route for one store is $25, is 25 times 11 the number, I'm using the example of somebody that has 11 cans, or should it be 25 plus 10 times a reduced number? A $5 discount or something, an $8 discount because they're there, you know, it's not, that truck's not adding mileage and a lot of fuel. It's sitting there running, idling and you got the same labor.
Yep.
But it's a lot more efficient to sit there and dump.
You don't have the same labor where it's deposited. You don't have the same labor where it's deposited.
Yeah.
Also not on a part of picking up and what you do with it once you dump.
Have you priced a three-yard dumpster lately?
That's, and that's what happens.
$2.75 is still a bargain compared to a dumpster service.
I just wanted to at least say we explored that option because if businesses are going to say, hey, economy's getting tight, you know, I'm paying premium for rent in Fairhope and now my garbage bill is going from 25 to 225 and I, it's, you know, it's, it's going to come, I just didn't know. There's some efficiency to being onsite at one place, I mean.
But they're also getting a six to seven day a week garbage service, which they don't typically get, and most of them went to multiple cans because their dumpster rate went so high that they didn't want to pay it and we were cheaper.
Right. You comfortable then?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
And I'm the one who's probably going to get the majority of the cost.
I'm not necessarily, I just, I wanted to say, at least we had that discussion.
We did, yes.
And. It's kind of like an argument that I brought up last week, last time, you know, if you got to, you got to nitpick, the fairness in this, it's like, it's hard to get fair all the way across the board. And, you know, somewhere along the line, you just got to pay and it's fair, you know, this, I think what we're presenting now is fairer than the alternative. And I think it also is beneficial for the fair because, again, if you live in a city apparently, this clean city, there's a cost to having it look like this. And everybody should have skin in the game, as it might be.
And I do agree with that and I think Richard's solution.
I do, I agree with that.
Has addressed at least, again, my, my heartburn with the way it was set up the first time. You know, and trying to make it, everything fair for everybody, I mean, you know, it's hard, but as long as I think you are entertaining what is a reasonable solution, that's really the best you can do under those circumstances. And I think what you presented does that. And I appreciate you getting it back so quickly and giving us the opportunity to talk about it. Counsel, any other questions for Richard or any other discussion on this?
Yeah, and I.
I don't want to cut you off.
And one bit of trivia, because Lisa researched the history of garbage at Fairhope, and the first time a fee was assessed was 61 years ago in 1961, and it was a dollar per house. And really considering we're only at $20 60 years later, I think we've been under inflation rate on that, so we've done good.
I have a question, Richard, to bring up, and it's not related to garbage collection fees, but it's related to public works and dropping off recycling. And this, this is based on some feedback that I received in just the last few days. I had a gentleman said that his 16-year-old son went to the landfill and he had a trailer that he had cardboard boxes on it. And this guy doesn't own a business that produces cardboard boxes, he's, he's not taking his business, you know, waste there. And they said, we don't allow double, the only trailer he had, he just had a double axle trailer, he didn't have a single axle, so he put it on what he had. They said, we don't allow double axle trailers and we don't take, we were not accepting cardboard at this time.
Well, and I know that we, we try, I mean, we, we fight the daily battle of, we have a lot of trades or business owners that are citizens of Fairhope, so they have a sticker. And we are constantly getting large, large loads that are not reasonably produced by a residence. And yes, we do refuse those. And it's not, not the material, it is just the volume. And, and it is a constant struggle and sometimes we make mistakes there. I'll be glad to look into it.
If this citizen puts it on the street, are we not going to pick it up? Let's say that citizen put it on their street, was he not doing the city a favor by delivering it himself? And it costs more money to pick it up because that was his only option. They told him to take it to the landfill and pay the fees.
And I, you know.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I can only suspect that the person attending the gates suspected this individual, this wasn't a residential production, it, you know, wasn't, it's something about, I don't know enough details.
Sure.
And I know the mayor and I are working on.
And I didn't hear a question in their integrity by saying, you know, are you sure you didn't produce this commercially or blah, blah, blah? You know, they're a realtor, I don't know what a realtor does that produces cardboard. So, and it wasn't cardboard science, I mean.
And so you have all the information, you know.
Yeah, but he did say that it was his 16-year-old son and he just, he was, you know, upset about it.
And if any given day, come on out and see the, the chain leak bullpen that we take cardboard in, it is, it gets filled every day and it gets emptied and sent to our processor. So, I mean.
And we don't make enough money on any of this. If we were making money on that, we'd take all we want, right?
Well, you never, right now, even at a decent price, the fact that we have to touch it so many times, you know, because it gets dropped off, then we, we got to get it loaded, then we got to get it to a processor. It's, it's labor intensive, but it's a program that's important to our citizens, so we do it. So, you know, and that's, that's kind of why we're hoping that Baldwin County can get their program going and goes, one, it's time, it's distance, it's cost of that travel and everything else, so.
Counsel, anything else on number one? No?
No.
All right. Richard, you are number two, is update on Southland Place.
Yes, sir. Y'all are all aware that we have been dealing with an ADA compliance issue in the original, or one of the original phases of Southland Place, which is on the south side of Manly Road. This is the north, basically the north phase of, of the subdivision. And we have been kind of grinding along, looking, working with the Department of Justice and Federal Highway, who are, who are the administrators of ADA compliance for sidewalks within public rights ways. And it's, it's a little bit of a challenge. The biggest issue is that this section of the neighborhood, as you recall, are what I would call garden homes or patio style homes. They're relatively set close to the street. There are some gradient differences, meaning the houses sit, most of them sit well above the street level, and so they have steep driveways. And where the sidewalk interfaces the driveway, we have a cross slope complacency issue. And we've gone through, and this council has awarded a contract to Neil Shaper, which are transportation engineers, and they have, over the last year, been working with a solution that can bring those sidewalks into ADA compliance. We got to a point where we had a plan that, that got us about 90% there, that was a little more cost effective. We've shared that with our folks who are oversight on this, and, you know, they pretty much said, we can't sign off that you've, it's in compliance if you only get to 85, 90%. So we went back and we've been working pretty hard. And through, through a hybrid system, we have now got a plan that can bring 100% of those sidewalks, 100% into ADA compliant. We have shared that plan with Federal Highway and Department of Justice, and they have signed off on it. But part of their process is stakeholder sign off, and that starts with this council, so that we're keeping you abreast. But we will start this month with a series of meetings with, with the property owners and residents about how this plan will impact them as it is administered and goes under construction. Couple of, couple of elements with this plan. It probably is the plan that has the least amount of intrusion across the right-of-way line into the public property. Because I understand if you're taking out driveway aprons and you're putting in, in the sidewalks associated with them, and you're putting it in at a much lesser cross slope, you got to tie the driveway back in, and that means working into the private side, meaning that we're going to be dependent. And, and if you can see very well on the plan, you can see the right-of-way line and the graded, the shaded out driveways that go past that are the ones that are, are most impacted there. And that means we will have to have a right of entry and a temporary construction easement from every property owner in that case. And the big unknown is what if somebody says, no, you can't bring this side into compliance and this side and have a segment in between that you can't tie to because of the geometry. A couple of elements of this plan, which involve raising the road, because that was the biggest issue, was grading up into people's front yards and maybe rendering their lot, their driveway unusable. We determined that we can raise the road by asphalt lifts as a pair to tearing the road up and build a new one. It would be a paving that you binder it up, and, and the highest any road is raised is no more than eight inches because we have to keep drainage working. That means inlet tops come up, curbs come up, and then the, the new sidewalk will actually move to the back of curb, curb line as opposed to having that little two-foot planting strip that's kind of a no man's land. And the biggest challenge is we, we don't, we, we're not to the point where we have a good cost estimate. So I placed into the budget as a placeholder, a total of 1.5 million dollars, which is a big, big, big number. We hope that it's significantly less than that, but I did not want to put a number that wouldn't guarantee coverage on this. And we really will not know the actual number until we go out for bid. And we can't go out for bid until we have gone through the stakeholder process with each property owner and made sure at least we have a understanding that we'll be able to get the necessary right of entries and temporary construction easements to make this whole project work. I think one of the good news is for the citizens is that at no time will their road really be completely tore up, meaning that when you pave and build up a road, it's usable after the second pass of the compactor. And so that, at the end of every day, they can drive on their roads. And the only time they'll be displaced from their homes is when we're working right in front of where their driveway apron is. And we're looking at, you know, a goal of a 72-hour window of tearing the old apron out, forming up, pouring, breaking down the forms and being able to have them back and on, on the fourth day in a perfect world. So that's where we are. It's going to be interesting to see how it's received. I think the one positive is when, if this project is successful and goes forward, that whole phase of the neighborhood is going to basically have a new road in front of their house, and new sidewalks, new curbs, it's going to, you know, I think that no one would argue that after the inconvenience of the project, that there would be a value added to that community that's 22 years old now. But that's where we are. I know that it is a potentially big price tag. There's just not a simple solution here. And, you know, we really, at the end of the day, don't have a choice, even though they say it is a voluntary compliance, but it's voluntary up to the point if we want to keep the federal money that we received and continue to get federal money in the future.
Counsel, any comments, questions?
So remind me again, when this started, how did we get to this state of it not being compliant? Was it, were there, I mean, did we not force the developer to build them to ADA compliance? Was that an oversight by the city? Or did they fail to perform the job and then we just didn't, and they're out of business? Or was it something that, that wasn't enforced at the time? And so 20-something years later, we're having to go back and retrofit? That doesn't seem right.
And I agree with you, councilman, and I'll kind of tell you the history of ADA, you know, ADA is 30 years old, okay? So the American Civil Rights Act was present when this neighborhood was built. But I will tell you, during that timeframe, everybody who was building things only thought ADA applied to vertical construction. How you've got people in buildings, how they use the buildings, the bathrooms, and is ADA compliant. I can even tell you Baldwin County did not have any language about ADA sidewalks in their subdivision regulations until 2008, okay? Because there was a landmark lawsuit in California in roughly 2005, 2006 that basically they came out and said, oh yeah, ADA applies to all these pedestrian facilities within municipalities, counties, and states, and you're going to have to meet ADA requirements. And then we went through this whole exercise of, okay, what are the, what are the ADA standards for sidewalks? Because it was, the only thing they had at that time was ramps and, and the truncated dome tops for crossings. They didn't have any information about width and, and running slopes and cross slopes and things of that nature. So I can't fault the developer, I can't fault the engineer, because at that timeframe, City of Fairhope, Baldwin County didn't have a word in their development regulations about an ADA standard for, for sidewalks. It was just a, there will be sidewalks and they'll be on both sides of the street. That was, and it'll be made out of 3,000 PSI concrete.
To see this kind of, you know, this, this heavy-handedness from the government above us, you know, you could bank, you could, you could bankrupt a small town with stuff like this. I mean, where does it end? I mean, what do we choose to not build any sidewalks? We're just going to have grass everywhere, just, you know, walk at your own, I guess if somebody trip over a tree root, then it'd be our fault too. I mean, so nobody's responsible for anything.
I think the other thing that you have to consider too, is if we go through this process, and we only do, one thing we talked about, like if you only did the first, the first plan that we came up with, and then you had somebody complain about it and he wanted to file yet another claim, then you'd be back in the same position. So, I mean, doing it right the first time is going to be really important and getting every, all the stakeholders, you know, on, on board with it. But if you have one person complain about anything and it's not compliant, then you're right back where you started from.
Well, how many of these 20-plus-year-old subdivisions are going to come back and want the same thing? I mean, I hate to put that out there in the public, but that's the question. When is it in?
And.
If there was no standards and we didn't really feel like we were doing anything wrong, the developer didn't feel like they were doing anything wrong.
And.
Where, where does it end?
And in the bigger picture, and, you know, as you know, we're under an ADA transition plan, and, and the one thing the federal government did make us do is, is go acknowledge where we have deficiencies. But basically, the requirement is, is when we do major work on any roadway, we have to bring those sidewalks into ADA compliance. Just as Church Street, if you recall, that project nearly has a quarter of a million dollars. It is just ADA complacency for that stretch of church from Oak to Fells. Just as this year in our paving package, we've got a few streets that we're adding ramps to and things to that because we can't resurface the street without it. And the goal is, is eventually, as you go through your whole city and do upgrades and maintenance, at some time, 50 years in the future, everything's going to be in compliance. I can tell you today, with new development, that is probably the thing that we harp on and are the harshest with those developers, is making sure those sidewalks are compliant the day that we accept them, because we don't want to have this in the future again. And I will tell you, Fairhope was a pace setter in sidewalks. And we are somewhat being punished for being a pace setter because we have a lot of old sidewalks that are four foot wide, some of them are three foot wide, and, you know, they got you from point A to B, but every one of them doesn't meet ADA compliance. That, that's just the reality. We're being punished. We're a little town that didn't build any sidewalks is, is, you know, they don't have a complacency issue because.
No good deed goes unpunished, right?
Well, the question then, I guess I'd have, is in the event something else like this comes up and it's city right of way, I mean, do we have the option to just destroy the sidewalk versus spending all the money to upgrade everything?
That was my first swing at it. No. Basically, ADA says that once you have accepted it, you have responsibility in perpetuity to maintain it as a facility.
Lawyers.
Here's some oyster shells. How about it?
But because you're going to be reviewing the budget, and that's a big number, I wanted, and before we start the stakeholder meetings, I wanted Richard to give y'all an update because it's a, it's a, it's a big number for his budget.
Sure. Thank you, Richard.
And I hope it becomes a smaller number.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is budget review, capital. Tell you one thing we're not skimping on right now is air conditioning.
It's freezing in here.
I am, it's meat locker in here right now.
Anybody who's been working outside loves it, but those of us inside do not. Yeah, Kevin's like, I love it. So I ask, on the budget tonight, on the agenda tonight is the review of the capital budget. And again, this is the second work session that we have reviewing the budget with the council. Tonight, we're reviewing the capital and capital improvements. We have not completed our department meetings as of yet. Kim and I meeting with each department head. We have met with some of them and we have made some changes to the budget, some of them we have not. There's still some more cuts to make, we know that. But before we, of course, move forward, we have it on the work session agenda, so you're not seeing everything that I will probably cut, but you have a, you know, you'll be able to see it and ask department heads questions or keep it for reference and call and ask questions as you see fit. Thank you.
In your packet, you have a list of what's budgeted as the capital. We've also attached some quotes that we have received so far from our vehicle providers. We've also attached some quotes that we have received so far from our vehicle providers. What they have went ahead and submitted to is we have some price increases that has been more than what we've had in the past few years. And so just wanted y'all to be able to see, you know, when you see some of these numbers of vehicles increasing price, where those numbers are coming from. That's, and then also this net set is, it's going to be capital improvements.
I do, can I jump in, Kim? I'm sorry, I do want to talk about vehicles a little bit. One thing that we're doing as we go through is Iceland's put together a great fleet maintenance spreadsheet. So we have the year, everybody's fleet in the spreadsheet, we have the year, the make and model of the vehicle. We have Tim Bong, who works in fleet maintenance, who's come along and told us what kind of money he's spending on each vehicle, the ones that we need to replace. So we make sure those vehicles that are costing us a lot of money in maintenance, that we're replacing those first and foremost. So when we're doing that, we know that some vehicles need to be replaced. Obviously, the department heads are asking for some vehicles to be replaced that don't need to be replaced. But one thing that we are possibly going to look at in August is coming to you and asking, having a comprehensive list of all vehicles that have been requested. There's a portal that's going to open where we have to input the vehicles that we want. If we don't put them in there in August, we stand a chance of not getting them. There is also the opportunity later in November for, I think, the F-350s?
Two 50s.
Two 50s that will go in the portal. But right now, it would be anything else. So that's one reason tonight, you know, we're looking over the capital budget. But we will put you together another comprehensive list of vehicles for you to look at as well. But again, know that as we're looking at these, we're talking about, you know, if we're going to replace a vehicle in the building department, can the vehicle they have be handed down to another department or police the same way? So we're sitting there with Tim, we're sitting there with the department heads and making sure that we're making, you know, good decisions when it comes to vehicles. And if they can be passed down, if they can be surplus, so we're not continuing to add to our fleet. And we're not continuing to put money into vehicles that we shouldn't be putting money into.
All right, so Kim, let me ask you this question. Just looking at some of these vehicle, so when I see something that says contract amount 25,957, price total 30,366, is that the increase that you're trying to show us?
That's going to be the total. Are you on the amount column?
Yeah, I'm just looking at going through each one of these. I mean, you know, all of them have a contract amount and then a package total cost. And I'm just, I thought I understood you to say that you were, you wanted us to see the price increases. And I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, is that the price increase from the contract amount to the current package total?
If you're, oh, yes. This sheet here is, this is what their contract price is. And then there's different packages they can add to the vehicles. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, it is.
This just happens to be, if y'all are used to seeing the F-150 run around $25,000, that usually is 25,000, 28,000 is what we've been paying for those F-150s? Now that you're seeing them, they're over 30,000. So, I mean, and that's what I wanted y'all to be able to see. You're probably been used to seeing what those F-150s, you know, have been coming through the green sheets. And now those prices are, you know, some of them are up $10,000, $8,000 for those vehicles. So that's what we're having to absorb. And, you know, what's going to open up in those portals is the F-150s. For us to have a list of how many F-150s that, you know, we're looking at potentially to purchase, we'll need to start putting that list to get, really that list together prior to the budget being passed.
We had, F-150s is one thing we had looked at and also Ford Explorers. We had talked about something a little bit with a smaller footprint. Of course, we want to look at gas savings as much as we possibly can. So we were looking, trying to look at Ford Rangers or something similar to a Colorado. Unfortunately, they're not on the bid list this year, the state bid list. So the only options I think we're going to have are going to be the F-150s or Explorer. So we were trying to look for something with a little, you know, again, for gas savings.
All right, counsel, just, Kim, did you have an order, a preferred order, and what did you want to do?
No, it's, I mean, it's a lot to absorb, it's a lot to absorb here of, you know, the wish list. And you can see some of the big departments, you know, you have police that, you know, is a big number. Fire, fire department is asking for a truck, which that truck is 24 months out. So that may be something that we budgetarily budget a portion for this year, a budget a portion into '24. But you've got, you've got some of these items, these big ticket items that you can, you know, really see. The fire department has put together a five-year capital plan. I don't know if y'all have seen that. And if y'all haven't, we may need to just email that out to y'all to see that what the fire department's needs are. And if you remember, we do have impact fees, but the impact fees is only for new expansion of equipment. So if they're replacing these vehicles, that funding source is not available. So I didn't know if y'all wanted just to go down line by line or if y'all wanted to have this as an opportunity to review this. And then when you get in, when we get into some of the departmental meetings, that y'all have this information. So just trying to see what direction y'all want, if you have questions. Also, you know, we can get into some of the capital.
Kim, I think that, you know, for me, obviously, I couldn't possibly go through every one of these line items tonight. I would just be literally, you know, picking on somebody. I'd just pick one line out and go, why is it this much? Why do you need to have all these options? Wouldn't be even fair to attempt to do that right now. But I don't know if you have the numbers. I guess, you know, I would like to maybe see a comparison for this year's budget to what we had in last year's budget, just to see. Because I think that we entrust the staff and the mayor and you, including the staff, to put this budget together and to be physically responsible. And if we see an overall number that we think is physically responsible, I think that's what we're going to look at the hardest and say, let me give you an example. If your capital expenditures went up $2 million and it was all vehicles or something, you know, we'd like, why'd it go up $2 million, you know? But if it's roughly the same number or based on revenue projections, if it went up proportionately, you know, maybe with some conservatism, because you've heard counsel up here talk about some conservatism, worrying about, you know, potential drop in revenue, worrying about a potential recession. I think that if we see a number that we feel is, you know, a good reasonable number, I think we have trust in you to, and the people that submitted what they want to spend their money on, to know more about what they need than we do. Although, you know, occasionally, we nitpick certain items. But it's hard to, it's hard to do that when you have so many, you know. You know, when you and the mayor sit down day after day after day with people that present to the budget, you know, we have to trust what you're bringing to us to be reasonable. Does that make sense?
It does. And I think too, what this is going to help is, as y'all do those meetings two by two, if there's a specific department that you have questions about, once we get the complete budget to you and things that you want to ask about, it's going to help you determine, say, hey, can you pull in the police chief? Or can you pull in the fire chief? Or can you pull in Public Works because we have some specific questions? Or as I've emailed out the list of departments that we're meeting with, and when we're meeting with them, if you have a specific department that you want to meet with, then you are welcome to join those meetings and ask some specific questions. I think that would be helpful too.
I think it's going to come down to what does this number look like compared to the last number? Another thing, since we're on the subject of vehicles a lot now, is I do worry about, I know that we want to hand vehicles down, but I also want us to dispose of a certain amount of vehicles every year. In other words, you can't have everybody in the city driving a vehicle. I mean, we can't afford the fuel for that, especially right now. And also, you, people become pretty inefficient. They don't find a way to, you know, get in the car with the coworker and go somewhere. It's like, instead of having one car going down to the marina to do some work, you'll go down there, there'll be five cars down there. And it's, it can get inefficient if everybody has a vehicle.
Well, and last week, we sold, I believe it was seven vehicles on govdeals.com or, yeah, it's .com. So I do know that there's vehicles that are, that do come off of our roll as we sell them. I think I can put a report together for y'all to be able to...
Yeah, like a net, I like to see how many net vehicles we have. Let's see, have that, see what that number looks like. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we have, we have a list, also, we started generating this last year during the budget is the list, here's all the vehicles we have, here's the ones that are recommended to be replaced, so that you can see department by department how many vehicles they have, it has the age of the vehicle. So that is, that is a report that we currently have, and we can email those out to you now. But I think what I'll put together for you is for the vehicle and equipment is to be able to give you that each department and give you a history of what we budgeted and what we've spent for the past three years. And realize there's some vehicles we keep rolling, rolling because we haven't been able to get them in. And so, I mean, and I'll give you examples, the meter department, we've ordered that vehicle, y'all have approved it, we've ordered it. It's expected to come in the last two weeks of September, but we put it on here because in case it does not come in until October, middle of October. But, you know, the dealership is telling us it's expected to them by the second, third week of September. Well, it's on here to roll that over because, you know, we don't, we still don't know the supply chain if we're going to get that vehicle. So there's several of those that you'll see on there. But I think if I put that together, that's more information for you to make good decisions with.
Kevin, any questions?
Yeah, I think, I think if I tried to ask you anything about this right now, Kim, it'd be unfair to me mostly. But no, I appreciate it. And, you know, I do agree with what Jack said, though, you know, looking at, looking at this in a vacuum is hard to do because you see a lot of big numbers, I mean, quite frankly. But I think if you compare that to year in, you know, what we're spending on vehicles and capital projects in its entirety, then it might have a little more perspective, at least for me. So, thank you.
All right, any more questions?
I don't think, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on, guys. Next up is committee updates. Councilman Burrell.
Uh, let's see. Airport Authority had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. This was right after our last council meeting. We still, we have some people interested in leasing parcels on the east side of the airport. We have to move some, move some things around due to some FAA regulations and how you approach some of these hangars. We have another group that has some interest in putting some more hangars on the southwest side of the airport. We have had a meeting with a realtor that, that is, that we've hired to market the west side. And I may have mentioned this before, that's Morgan Ashhurst, Ashhurst-Neymar Realty. And he's just looking at ways to market that, whereas trying to market that as 100-plus acres over on the west side to break that into smaller lots. And we've also, which was very interesting, looked at a couple of ways to enter the property, not just, say, off of 32, we know we have that, or not just down on the south end. I forget the name of that drive, down at the very south end of the runway. But maybe some intermediate points, which would actually bring the property values that might have been something in the very interior of the property. It may have access and potentially even, you know, four-lane access off of Highway 98, which we think would be, would make that land a lot more valuable. So we're looking at ways to market that. That's kind of the big news there. I had expressed some concerns to the authority over, you know, how many hangars we allow to be built if we are ever to build our own, the airport authority that is, and rent them. I think we should be cautious of how much competition, you know, that we have. Unfortunately, the cost of building hangars right now is sky high. And, you know, I think that we should go to people and say, what are you willing to pay? Because we can't build them for what we think you want to pay. For instance, if you want to pay 450 a month, we can't build them for that. But will you pay 850? I think that question needs to be asked. And I'm making up numbers right now. I don't know what that number is, but whatever that number is, are they willing to pay it? We've got 20-something people on the waiting list. A lot, a lot going on out there right now. That was it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Bean?
Actually, we had a harbor board meeting and then I have a court, so we sat around and talked about some different things. Voted on or done. That's about it.
I don't have anything, but the bike and ped committee does have some reappointments on here. I see Mr. Gover in the audience. Gary, will you come to the microphone real quick? Just let me, just so you can vouch for these reappointments for the bike, pedestrian and bicycle committee?
Yes, I do.
This is the board's, or the committee's wish?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks, sir. Glad to see you on there again. So, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We did have a, when you mentioned Mr. Gover, he was there. We had a rec meeting as well, a rec board meeting last week. And it was more informational. We do have item number 20 on tonight's agenda, which are some improvements to the municipal football stadium. And we recommend that the council adopt those expenditures for improvements to the stadium. We had a short discussion about the pickleball out at Coyle Creek. And there were some questioning whether or not that was in demand. I believe that Pat did state that there's a tremendous amount of demand and interest out there, more so than what most people may think. And we also had the Fairhope Environmental Committee just introduce themselves. Chairman Gover, and there was another member of that committee came and just said, you know, we should talk about things. And I thought it was a really good idea that, you know, if the rec board is considering things that may have environmental impacts, that we should, you know, collectively put our minds together. And the example that was used in the meeting was the colony land that was donated to us out behind the Boy Scout Lodge, the 40 acres there. You know, we've had a presentation to this council as to what we should do with that. And there's a lot of things that could be discussed, whether we need some regional water retention there. You know, there was a talk whether there's going to be a lake or not a lake. Some people were for, some people were against. But can that design be used to also help the environment? So there's ways that rec and the environmental advisory board can work together to come up with solutions. With interest for that. Fair enough, Mr. Gover?
Okay, counsel, any more committee updates? All right, we'll move into department head updates. And so I would ask that if you, if you have an update, be ready to go ahead and address whatever rigid item you have also, and we'll make our way through both. Don't be shy.
Two weeks ago, I put out an RFP for interest rates for our reserve bank accounts. We've been under a good deal for the past three years, Centennial Bank, but it ends actually the end of this week. That rate was, had a floor of 210, where, if y'all know, interest rates bottomed out in the past two years. So I had Sid's Banks respond to the RFP. Nothing as sweet a deal as what we had, but it's, they're not too, too bad. And I, when they came in, I actually talked to Council President Conner to get his feel for, we had a couple that were very close. But Smart Bank gave a rate of the Fed funds, which is currently right now at 1.75 minus 75 basis points. So that gets us at 1%. And as the Fed rate increases, you know, our rate will increase. And it's projected, I believe they're supposed to meet this week, this week for a rate increase.
75 to 100 basis points.
Yes, so the next one was PNC. They were recommending their money, their bank money market account rate. They came in at 110, but when the Fed raises the rate, we don't, they, their bank rate does not go along with the Fed rate. So there's no way of being able to tie down if that Fed rate goes up to 75 basis points, if that rate will go up 75 basis points. So in my conversation with Jimmy was to go with Smart Bank, that since we know what it's tied to, it's easier to be able to track. And Smart Bank also had a floor of, you know, it was 0.5%, but at least it didn't go... And, um, Smart Bank also had a floor of, you know, it was point five percent, but at least it didn't go minus if the Fed rates go down so low. So I just wanted to update you on that, that, you know, the conversation I have with council president and where the rates came. You know, Bank Corp South, they were the next runner up, just to give you that they had, um, an option of 1% fits for three years. And, um, their, uh, their second option was the Fed, Fed targeted rate of the 1.75 minus 110 basis points. So, um, anyway, I just want to give y'all.
What, how good is the Smart Bank, uh, quote good for?
It's three years.
No, how long is it valid for? I mean, could the Fed raises their rate by 100 basis points this week, we don't want to retract that offer?
No, I mean, this is what they're, this is what they submitted in and they knew, um, this needed to go into effect August 1st, because the rates.
It's, it's set to go into effect if we adopt it August the 1st?
Yes.
August the 1st?
Per, per city clerk.
Is that on tonight's agenda?
There's an ordinance in place that gives her the responsibility to report this to you guys, but she can do it.
Oh, okay, you can do it?
City treasurer.
And that's the reason I'm giving.
Need to jump on that Smart Bank.
So, so I'm just reviewing with y'all, uh, these are the results, if y'all have any heartburn with any of them, but these are the results that came in from the, from the, um, RFP that came in last Thursday.
Harbor?
My, 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 my strong opinion is to jump on that Smart Bank, that's, that's probably better than I thought we, we would do. You get 2.75, the Fed rate, you're gonna, you'll be right back close to that 2% when we get it. In fact, you're gonna be exactly at that.
All right, y'all have any more questions for me on this?
No. Is that all you got, Kim?
I believe so.
All right, well, thank you.
Evening. I've got, uh, the first two agendas, five and six are final adoption. So it's second reading of the two zoning cases. One is for the B2 zoning at the northeast corner of Highway 104 and 181 to B2. We discussed this last meeting, so if there's any questions, I can answer them now. But if not, the second one was an amendment, uh, to adjust where kennels and animal hospitals can be. We also discussed this one last meeting. And then number nine is a site plan review. First time hearing this one did go through planning commission at the corner of Ingleside and Nichols Avenue for a mixed use development. If y'all have any questions on that one.
Yeah, I think, I think you'll need to present that in the meeting.
I think so. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Hunter.
Good evening. Uh, I would just like to, to mention what, uh, Jack mentioned earlier about the project in the football stadium on the visitor's side. We're also doing the storm grain improvements there that, uh, you guys approved a couple of weeks ago. So these projects kind of go hand in hand, uh, because we're going to have to be ripping up the asphalt walkways over there anyway to redo the piping. So I did call the contractor this morning to make sure that he is able to get this done. We have our football game in there August the 19th. Actually, we have a St. Michael game the night before on the 18th. So, uh, we're under a severe time crunch, but, um, I have talked to both contractors and they said they can get it done as long as we move, move forward quickly.
Counsel, any questions for Pat on that?
Thank you.
No, thanks, Pat.
Uh, counsel, I've got, uh, we have item number seven, which is the second reading of the right of way ordinance adoption. And I hadn't really spoken to anybody, hadn't had any questions, so I'm assuming everybody's comfortable with it. If you don't, if you have any questions, happy to talk about it.
So this is the final, the six and, or seven and eight are final adoptions, right? Thank you, Eric.
I've got, um, item 15, looking to, uh, move our off-site backups from our current solution to CSPAR. CSPAR is our current ISP and what we're hoping to achieve is just a faster transmit speed. Right now, by the time we get, uh, backups uploaded to our current solution, a new backup is in place. We just don't have time to get the data moved. So we're just trying to reduce the transmit times for our backups.
Is this 39,000 a budgeted item?
It is budgeted. It's budgeted for our current solution. We haven't exceeded that budget yet, so we're just going to basically move to this new solution.
Counsel, any questions for Jeff on this?
What else my, uh, that, that, was that project was budgeted at, I can't read that number, 55,000?
Right.
So it's coming in under, brother, are we going to have something else to come in under that just item named computer expense? I mean, are we going to ever exceed that number?
No, we won't exceed it, shouldn't exceed it this year. And that, that, um, that 39,680 is for 12 months, so we're not even going to have 12 months, you know?
Got you. I see that now, I see the monthly in there now.
Yeah, and we want to, it, it'll probably take us time to even get up to the monthly amount too, because we've got a, we're going to start with our critical backups and, uh, see how it goes and, you know, we'll slowly move everything over. It's just, it's going to be a, a little transition period.
Counsel, any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, is this all your only item?
This is my only item, yep.
Good for you.
Said we, you, we're currently, said it's replacing the server the city currently uses. So the server that we're currently using is onsite here, or is that, uh, like a cloud service?
It's supposed to say replace the service.
Service, okay.
Right. We, we have, we have, uh, we have a local backup server here. We, we keep our backups local, but this is for offsite. We've got it, you got to do both because we've had, you know, if you have a natural disaster and fire.
Have offsite backup.
That's right, so this is getting our onsite backups offsite for disaster recovery.
Do we currently have an offsite backup?
Right. We do, we currently have.
We do, okay. Who, who is currently serving?
Currently it's AWS.
Okay, that's what I want to know, okay. That's Amazon?
Amazon, yes.
Thanks, sir. Lieutenant Nolte, how are you, sir?
I'm good, how about you?
I am wonderful.
Uh, the only item we have is number 17, which is Vertra, the, the virtual training simulator, which is similar to the FATZ machine that I think a lot of y'all went through when we had it last. Be a very useful tool to us, if anybody has any questions.
And, and my recollection is this is a cost that we included in the projects that we could fund with our current surplus? Is that right? Counsel, anybody got any questions? Lieutenant Nolte, at this time, on the simulator?
Talked to the chief this morning about it, had a lot of, yeah, I was asking a lot of questions and I was, you know, happy with the answers. Just, you know, I'd asked about, you know, are we going to utilize this, you know, is it going to be something that we use for a month or two? And then it sits by the wayside or, and she felt like it'd be used, you know, you know, very often, uh, officers should go through that training monthly and not just officers, but even, you know, people that work, you know, uh, at the justice department. If somebody comes in, how to handle certain situations, and that was real helpful to know. It's not just, say, active shooter, it's a lot of different.
It's a great de-escalation tool is what it is, it's good. Y'all, the only other thing we want to get out there is a reminder, Wednesday is the back to school program where we give away the backpack and the school supplies. It will be at the Methodist Church from four to six, along with hot dogs and stuff. And hopefully we see everybody in the community out there.
Sure, thanks, sir.
I, I got a standing ovation from the, uh, other directors and, and superintendents when I announced I only had one item on the agenda tonight. So, um, uh, just a couple of updates of things going on. The pecan building west is under construction right now, they've gotten demo complete, we're doing wall layout, so we're excited. And I know, uh, the planning zoning staff, they're looking forward to having some, some, uh, nice office space. We're down on Church Street today, they, they really, uh, are fighting against the weather, but they're making some progress. They, um, were probably close to, uh, more than 200 feet of extension to both the sewer main and the water main, uh, today when we visited it at lunchtime. A little bitty project that, that may not mean much to you, but definitely means much to the citizens. As you know, we work in cooperation with Single Tax on sidewalks and, uh, we, we join them, uh, on Windmill Road to complete some missing links out there, it's under construction now. And there's at least one neighbor, citizen voter, that's very, very, very happy it's going on. And, uh, and we're excited to, to, you know, to work in conjunction with them, we're providing the concrete, they're doing all the labor. And, uh, that just works out as a win-win for everybody. Been working with Pat on some restroom designs for the park, especially the new ball fields there at Volanta. And hopefully we've got a, a design going out the door there that will, will, will help satisfy that. I can answer any questions on item number 19, that's, uh, Quail Creek. We promised Lisa that we cleaned up some insurance claims that we received payments on, and that was the maintenance buildings there at Quail Creek. Had some damage from Hurricane Sally and, uh, it was one of those, uh, hanger-ons there that just didn't get done. And, and that price came in under what we, uh, received on the insurance claim. So we definitely recommend going ahead and getting that roof re-screwed and sealed up. Uh, the, the biggie is deja, deja vu all over again, item number 14 is Art's Alley. And we're going to think fourth, fourth time is the charm. I would ask that when you introduce that resolution or, and, and vote on it, we probably also always need to add, and just didn't get put on this time, subject to the, the, the funding final approval, meaning that, that, uh, because the price did go up some more, it's an 80/20 with the MPO, they have gobs of 5307 funnies and, uh, monies in their account, but it'll have to go through that. And we have gotten to the point where, uh, FTA has reviewed it, we provided them an updated schedule of values, updated independent cost estimate. And at this point in time, it looks like they're going to sign off on it, but we do need to make sure that we add that, you know, subject to, uh, funding approval from the, the FTA and MPO, so.
Richard, we meet Wednesday in the policy board?
I think Sarah's planning to have it.
Is that on the agenda?
I, I believe so, yes, but I'll, I'll confirm that, so.
Will you, will you follow up on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions on that, but, uh, uh, we, we, we think maybe the jinx may be over and let's, let's get this one moving forward, so.
So when do we think that might be completed? That, that may be a question we get.
Going off the top of my head, I think we have, uh, 270 days in the contract. But the, the longest part of that is the actual building of the hub building itself. So that, that, the envisioning of, of those contract documents is that all the driving surfaces and all that can be done relatively quickly and the, and the alley will be fully functioning while they're completing the vertical construction. So, um, we, we do feel that, uh, you know, we'll probably have to do something like we did with Church Street is that we would be a pause in there during the festival seasons and things of that nature like Montegra, just to, just to have a construction equipment out of there. I think that, uh, the contractor in anticipation of moving forward maybe has had some discussion on some property that's close by that's, that's vacant for laydown and things like that, so, uh, but we'd love to get started sooner than later. And, and, but understanding that they've got to accommodate our, our seasonal schedule of the events downtown, that, that we just can't have, uh, that. And, you know, the good news is, the way the contract is written is, is that, you know, they're, they're to work in zones, complete, get traffic back on it and move, you know, linearly through the, uh, linearly through the alley. And, and because we have to accommodate all the businesses, we have to always have access to the parking garage at, at all times. So it, it will be intrusive, uh, but hopefully it will, uh, actually move forward, because we've talked about it now at least for five years.
Since you've been here, right?
Yes. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Richard. Don't be shy. Seven million dollars, there's no reason to be shy, come on.
No, I, um, we got two things on the agenda tonight, number 12 is us.
Yeah, and, and give us.
Did it extend the contract for, through the September 30th? We've got three projects ongoing that we could not get finished. We had some weather delays, we had supply issues getting piped, there were several problems. But we really need to finish this, one St. Michael's Way is getting that 12-inch mat, water main in. We had a couple of holdups with the county, we ended up having to go up and bore those two crossroads instead of cutting them like we originally intended. Also, the downtown behind, uh, the Honey Bake Hounds, where that alleyway, we've had a lot of issues with the sewer there. We're going to have to redo the sewer, we started it, but we had, they only had one crew, we pulled them off to get St. Michael's Way underway. So just a couple of things that we need to get cleaned up and finished. We're also in the process of putting out the bid for the new, for the coming year for the on-call.
All right.
And then 13 is a big one. We got two bids, uh, we, we did everything evenly possible, get as many bids as we could, we just couldn't get anybody interested in the bid. The two bids that came in, I'm sure you've got in front of you, was their local Creel and then Mr. Baggett had a mobile. Creel being the low bid.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a big number, but I mean, it's, it's got to be done. Price is what the price is.
We do have some used, I think the mayor was, was spread, we're going to get a little help with the water mains, so, um, that is some kind of use. So I mean, we have got some good things we're going to talk about in the near future, but this is not one of them here, I'm sorry to say. But it's very much needed, uh, we've been lucky, good Lord's been blessing us with rain, so we've kept our water totals under six million a day for the last couple of weeks. So, you know, we're holding our own, we're doing very well, our main breaks have been less, uh, the guys, the, what few we've had, the guys have been able to respond quick, so, you know, all in all, we're pretty good.
Counsel, any questions?
Jason, who did the engineering for these upgrades, this seven million worth of upgrades?
On this was Krebs.
Krebs did the engineering?
Yes, sir.
You feel really good about everything, you looked at the plans? The reason I ask that, I mean, you're talking, you know, such a, a price tag. I mean, I just wanted you to let us know that you feel really good about the design and you feel like it's, you know, going to, and I know you do, but I just want to hear it, because you wouldn't have brought it up here if you didn't, but.
I did, and I've also, you know.
You know, do you feel like? We're, we're, I know we need improvements, I know that we need a lot more water, we need another well, I don't, I don't dispute any of that. But, you know, you feel really good about everything that they're going to be doing?
Yes, I do.
And I, maybe for, for the public, would you explain how much more water we're going to be pumping? How much more, uh, water we can produce maybe on a, on a daily basis once this is completed?
When this is completed, without utilizing the test well, just with the well 11 that's being drilled currently, that plant will produce a little over four million gallons a day, which is, you know, 2,800 gallons a minute which come out of that plant.
So, so our capacity will increase by four million a day?
Our capacity will not, it will increase by 2.8 million gallons a day, because that's already producing a little over a million gallons a day now.
I got you, so 2.8, just so people know, I think our capacity is about nine million gallons a day?
The best we can do, yes, sir.
Best we can do, so 2.8, let's just round that up to roughly a 33% increase in our, the city's capacity, roughly, right?
Yes, sir. And we've already been pumping the test well, uh, it's, you know, roughly a thousand gallons a minute we can get out of it, but we're still unsure about the water quality. Those tests are not, they're incomplete as of right now. It's, you know, there's no odor, it tastes fine, uh, we've done our own tests, the manganese is elevated and so is the iron. But those are still, you know, I can't address what the water quality is until we're done, okay?
I think it's just important that we convey to our citizens that a 33% increase in, in volume, in daily volume is, it's a big number, a big number.
And we're not only looking out there, we're talking tomorrow with our engineer about our treatment plant one side, about possibly adding a well there. So this is, you know, every, we're looking at everything, trying to, for the future, for the next five years or 10 years, what's the next place we're going to add a well, you know, that's the things we're looking at right now.
And you said 2.8 gallons, not counting the test well, what have you counted that, is that, would that increase that number even more?
Yeah, the test well, just like it sits, if you just drop a submersible pump in, can get a million gallons a day. But again, I want to underline, we have not tested the water, because it's in a deeper aquifer.
Sure.
And we've not tested the water, so there's several things we've. And we've not tested the water. So there's several things we've got to test to make sure what's in the water, okay?
Right.
We just want to make sure that I say that. So if I do come back next month and say, these are the numbers and they're bad, you know, we don't know.
Right. And Kevin is still the one that tastes the water to see if it tastes okay on these test wells?
Mm-hmm.
Sure will, I tell you that. Got no problem there.
Yeah, I think he's a little better looking than he was before you had it.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it.
How are y'all this evening?
Wonderful. How are you?
Pretty good. Update, the Nichols Street substation is now energized with two circuits currently hot running out of it. The contractors are in progress of getting more out, but it's just a slow process. But we do at least have it up and running finally. And I have resolution 18.
All right. So Lisa, just so, was there, there was an issue with the price on this? Is that?
The quote did not have 3,300 on there, so I redid the resolution, and your agenda up there is correct in front of you.
Okay.
Should be 221, 352, I believe.
357.
Seven.
Okay, okay.
This truck that's in front of you is currently in our 23 budget, is to replace the 15-year-old tree truck that we're currently using to do all our tree trimming. And the reason why I'm bringing this up for you is because Altech contacted me first of the week, saying they had this truck that they quoted us, ready to be delivered, because another company went belly up and we're not able to purchase it. So what we're asking is, we currently have another bucket truck that's been on their assembly line now for two years. They're supposed to be delivered in the middle of August of this year. But there's things happening. They're telling us that it'll be middle of December, if then, before we can get delivery on that truck. We currently have right at 282,000 in an account waiting for this truck to be finished, which I approved two years ago. So what we're asking is if we could take the 221 from that account and go and purchase this truck. Because even if the budget passed and we wait, it's 65 weeks before they can even deliver it. So we're looking at over a year if we wait. So that's what we're asking, if we can, once the budget's passed, put this money back into that account, and get this other truck, whenever they finish it, in December or January.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on this?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
So the gas department, we don't have anything on the budget for tonight, and we're on the agenda for tonight. But quick update here, the RFQs for the engineering for cast iron, Tuesday morning. So we had a pre-bid meeting last week. We had four engineers show up. We, I know there's three or four more that's going to bid on it, or do the RFQs. So looking for Tuesday morning, and hopefully we get a good engineering company that, you know, with us, the mayor review, and I'll get to pick one. So moving forward with the cast iron replacement, pretty exciting.
Is that Tuesday morning meeting and tomorrow?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay.
Yep. So we've got a couple of big projects in the gas department waiting on state and county permits for. Other than that, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Only thing that we have in capital is I need a new range cart, so it won't be that expensive compared to what all the other folks are asking for. But that'll be the only thing I'll need. I would like to entertain that we, with the mayor's help, the peri-weather weather system I'd like to have installed at Quell Creek, that'll be in your budget for next year. It's a lightning warning protection that I think we, after all the lightning we've had in the area, we do not have anything at this time to protect our citizens out there at the golf course. So I'll have you more information in the budget on that, and I'll be discussing that with Kim and the mayor. As a matter of fact, we have our meeting tomorrow. But I think it'd be important to put into the budget for the golf course. Tonight, you'll be approving the bush hog or the trim mower that Tom asked for. Last week, we moved some things with Kim Creach's help and the mayor's help. That'll be very useful for him because he's mowing roughs in a lot of open areas with just zero turn mower, so. But that money has been moved around in the budget. Even though it is new, I think it's in there that we can afford that, and it won't be over our budget that we proposed. We had 22 new juniors come through the REC Center. They were introduced to golf for the first time. They had the golf camp out there. That was a lot of fun. That was a three-day camp last week. The cart path asphalt bid will be out in the next couple of weeks. Aaron Wolf has finished that up, and so that will be coming in the next few weeks for you all. That was, it is in our budget. Asphalt crews were out this week at Quell Creek through the Public Works Department. They were patching some of the things out there at Quell Creek in the roadway. I want to say thank you to that. Unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other department updates? I think the only things we didn't have, somebody come up here for, number 10 and number 11. Mayor, those are both things that you can speak to?
Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to 10. I could share with you the MPO.
Yeah, I can speak to 10. So this is just another grant opportunity for the Mobile River Bridge. You heard about the mega grant that we had applied for. I think we had a resolution in support of that. That was a grant where we requested 500 million. This is another grant in addition to that. So we're just asking all the member cities and the county commissioners and, you know, businesses, Chamber of Commerce, those types of organizations to pass a resolution in support of asking the federal government for more money to pay for that.
Sure. Okay. And then number 11, I think we all know about that.
Right. Number 11 is the reassignment of the pier, marina, and restaurant lease to a new individual, our new LLC.
All right. I think that's it. So we'll adjourn the work session and come back in about 10 minutes. Get started. Thank you.